That you will accomplish over the next several months. There are a few ground rules. I think we have some slides. And I just want to walk through the agenda real quick because it's, it will, it will go quickly. The time that we have. And so I just want to walk through a couple of things. I think you have the slide packet in front of you. In terms of ground rules today, let's just have one conversation. That's the conversation at hand. As Reverend Mac asked, we want you to be fully engaged and attentive in the dialogue. And so I'll call and probe and ask follow up questions if there's an idea. And we just want to have more discussion about that. We'll probe that just a little bit more. We want to be as strategic and as forward thinking as possible. So if we get into very granular tactical issues, I might try to lift us up. We'll, we'll capture those thoughts in what I call the parking lot. And we'll, we'll have that up here. And then finally, I think everybody's perspective and opinion is important. And so if you're quiet, and I don't think there are any shrinking violets among this board. But if, but, but if you're not engaged, I'll, I'll try to prompt you and, and call on you. And likewise, if someone's dominating the conversation, not that I would be ignoring you, but I may sort of give other people equal time and space. Is that fair? Thank you. So after, in the next couple of minutes, I'm going to be asking you two questions. And really it's in a way of introductions. I know most of you and the new board members, I have not met Dr. French. Dr. Fraser, I think, I actually know Dr. Fraser. I think we're from the same neck of the woods. I think we bumped into each other and Ms. Coakley are the only three that I don't personally know and had met at some point. So it's good to meet you and look forward to working with you in the future as well. But the two questions I'm going to be asking you is how are you feeling in this moment? As by way of introduction, how are you feeling? And then in an ideal world, as it relates to just broadly, you can be specific to your role and work as a member of this board or as broad as you want. But in an ideal world, finish that statement. And so how are you feeling? And then in an ideal world, finish that statement. What would you hope for? What would you want? And I think that grounds us in the humanity of who we are as, as people and as individuals. And so we'll, we'll work with that for 10 minutes. And then I'm going to call on Dr. Postaway to really ground us in some information and some data. You can, you can go back to that first slide, please. Sort of taking a look back on where we've been. Reflect on where we are. And then we're going to spend the balance of the time having a conversation about where you would like to go, where, where we're going. We're going to explore some opportunities. We're absolutely going to raise and maybe identify some, some challenges. But we want to focus more on the opportunities. And I think if we get stuck, we do have staff members here to, to be able to, to get us out of a quagmire if we need to with, with information and data. So, so we'll do that. And then we'll wrap up toward the end of this. Review where we've been and I'll document that. Please go back to the, yeah. Where we've been and then we'll, we'll close out the day with some follow up from there. So I'm going to start with Reverend Mac. As a matter of fact, before you start Reverend Mac, as I facilitate this, I'd like to answer those two questions first. How am I feeling in, in an ideal world? So, so how am I feeling today, given everything that we've witnessed the last week? I'm, I feel a resolve and a hope that with leadership and with courage, we'll see our better days. I think those days are ahead of us. And so I'm, I'm actually optimistic about who we are and what we intend to be. In an ideal world, I, I would love to see that the society's benefits as well as their burdens are not skewed by race, by sexual orientation, or by gender. That we have a truly equitable world and community that we all live and thrive in. So that's how I'm feeling today. That's ideally what I would love to see. It's a Reverend Mac, I'm going to turn it over to you. And we'll just go very quickly, just like I did, just trying to model it. Very quickly and succinct, and I'll capture some of these thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gos. Actually, today I feel kind of perplexed, really. Given the challenges that we have seen over the last few days in in the, in the society in which we know to be different, given all of our COVID situations we've dealt with and then to have seen something erupted nationally here with our local government, with our government. It is very perplexing to see that we are still this time in day dealing with issues of that magnitude. In an ideal world, I would see us more in a manner of position to one, not having to deal with the COVID situation anymore because truly COVID has, has changed the way we, we look at life as a whole and, and the different things that we have done and how we do them. But in an ideal world, that we'll be able to work more on a, on a scale to where there is no division, where there, where there is no divide among people. Rather, it's party color, skin color, whatever the case may be. But that we all will be able to work together for the good of the cause in, in the ideal world. And one day that, that will be the case. But right now, we see as not.
Thank you, Reverend Mac. Ms. Darby?
Um, how am I feeling? Today I'm feeling like I'm drinking water out of a fire hose. And in an ideal world, in Charleston County, every child or every parent would be able to confidently send their children to their neighborhood school, if that's what they want. We'd have, you know, equity across the district.
Thank you. Dr. Fraser?
And I have to agree with what I heard already. But being in the system for the past 20 years where I had to realize that cronyism, racism, and patriotism was a law of the land here in the district. And moving forward, I am hoping that under the leadership of Dr. Postaway, we can move forward so that we build a system where there's equity for all of our children.
Thank you, Dr. French. Dr. French?
Yes, I'm feeling a lot of the same things, but also feeling a great deal of stress with the great responsibility of representing our constituents and working to make our learning and teaching environment good for our students and staff. And then in an ideal world, I see our society is always be willing to learn and always actively learning from our experiences and from each other and growing and cooperation and caring for each other.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Green?
I'm kind of feeling out of sorts and for a number of reasons that y'all probably would hear, but and in an ideal world, I would love to see us just get along. Show respect and trust of each other.
Thank you. Chetra?
I echo everyone as well. I'm actually feeling optimistic. I think change is coming. I think people are pushing for it. In an ideal world, I want to see access and equity throughout our schools and opportunities and learning experiences for our students. That doesn't differ by school or race.
Thank you. Ms. Coates?
So I've had a very really rough year and a half. So I guess I would echo the out of sorts, very discombobulated. And because of that, I've had to very strenuously narrow my focus. So in an ideal world, I have to think in smaller terms. I'm overwhelmed by what is outside my world right now. It's, it's and so I think in an ideal world, we would have our state leaders and our federal leaders, as well as our district leaders, meaning boards as well, focused on changing the structural system as opposed to continually trying to change the people or singular situations.
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
Today I think I'm, I'm feeling a heaviness. There's a lot happening and there's, it's more than a notion to balance what is happening in our lives personally because of COVID-19, as well as what we have to do as leaders. I feel like every other day I hear about someone having passed away due to COVID. And then, you know, we talk to constituents and they're talking to us about their experiences and they just want to be heard. But then you have to balance that with what is legal, what works for the masses, and what is, what is most productive when you're dealing with a system of this size. I think in an ideal world, we would have students who were actually going into buildings believing they were going to be inspired by what they were learning and the, the content they were engaging. We would have parents who felt very safe and comfortable sending their kids to school. And I think we would have teachers who felt supported in their charge to educate our students. And when I say supported, I don't just mean, you know, by the district or by the community. I mean really the tangible items that make it, that enable a teacher to do their job successfully, whether it's additional help in the classroom, when they're trying to reach students at various levels, mental health supports, et cetera. I just, I think in an ideal world, we would have a system that had all the inputs for everybody to get exactly what they needed out of the system. And so maybe echoing what everybody else has said, it's equity.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Dorita to, to close us out by answering these two questions. Excuse me, Dr. Postaway. Sorry.
Thank you. I guess you're probably feeling the burden of the immediacy of the, of the impact of the decisions that we are requiring to make and that we signed up to make. We're feeling the, the distress of those who are contacting us and, and board members. And in an ideal world, our leadership team would accomplish precisely the goals that board members have articulated this morning. We would do our part to make sure that the system itself changes, that parent confidence increases, that all employees feel valued, feel supported, and feel liked, and that every student in our school knows that they're cared for and that they're diva, whether often they wouldn't have been and they not be so.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm circling some words up here before we jump into the next portion of our agenda.
Excuse me. Can I speak? I'm present.
Oh, did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm sorry, Ms. Coakley. I didn't realize you were on the, on the call. My apologies.
Not a problem. And good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to do via Zoom. And I want to apologize to everyone for not being there, but these very two questions hit very close to home. And I want to say I want to echo everything in the room that I've heard. And I just want to think that my partner, Courtney Waters, has kind of touched really close to home. Over the holidays, I did lose a family member to COVID. So that's a personal hit home. That's how I'm feeling. How I'm feeling, that was a close hit home. So this is a reality set in for me. In an ideal world, in an ideal world, I wouldn't have to have that sign that says you've made this mama angry because our children will be able to go to any school and get a quality education. And politics would not play a role in how our children learn and how they're educated, nor will there be people put in place to make sure that our children are not learning in and of their world. But right now I do feel a little bit optimistic. You know, facing some of the challenges that we've all faced. And again, I will continue to say that COVID not only exposed, but it's leveled the playing field of a lot of people, of a lot of children. And so I hope that just going forward, that we do all find some common ground to make sure that our children know that they are capable and that our parents know how important they are and needed to make sure our children, you know, it is important to make sure they are going for it. So thank you very much for actually having these two questions as introductions today.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley, and thank you to all of you for answering these questions. I think, I don't know if you can see the screen, Ms. Coakley, but the, the chart up here. But I highlighted or circled several words and concepts that I, I want to lift up based on, based on our last conversation. And that is that there are a range of emotions and feelings that we're all experiencing right now. From optimism to distress, to feelings of being overwhelmed, to quite frankly, being out of sorts. We would call that disoriented. And, and this is a disorienting time. If you feel like I do sometimes, it's like, what am I going to wake up to tomorrow? When I was talking to Dr. Postaway last week about this, many of you know I'm an ex-military officer. I said to her, Dr. Postaway, I think you guys at the school district are engaged in what I, in the military would call a high intensity conflict. And that's a, that's a war terminology that quite frankly means that on any given day, anything's, anything could happen. And quite frankly, you have to read and react. You have to respond immediately is what Dr. Postaway said and what a lot of you are feeling. But then ideally, what I think you are all after, at least what I heard you say, is this underlying issue of equity, which is not new to this board, certainly not new to this school district, this staff, or this community. But I think someone articulated it very well. And that is that, that we should focus on changing the structures, the, the things that perpetuate these, these systems of inequity, these systems of bias, instead of focusing and trying to change people. We are uniquely who we are. And so I would commit that for the next hour and 30 minutes, the time we have left, that we try to stay focused on this part of our emotions right now. And that's the optimism. That we find strength and solidarity and the optimism that you as a board have an opportunity to clearly articulate a path forward over the next several months that will answer the call that I think you're all being called to. And that is how do we help our students, regardless of where, where they live in this district, this county? How do we help them not only emotionally and mentally and physically overcome the last 10 months? Because there is light at the end of this COVID tunnel. But then how do we recover what may have been lost over the, that period of time? And then how do we, and excuse me, Reverend Mac, I've got a pastoral piece in my background. How do we do this work, do what I think Dr. Fraser calls us to do? And that's begin the process of healing our community. And I think if there's any place that you had the opportunity to do that in your leadership, that's around this table. And so what we've asked Dr. Postaway to do, before we jump into our generative discussions about how you will lead forward, is to really ground us in where we've been over the last two years or so. And to really think about the goals that this board and previous boards have set, to ground that in what's left to be done. So she's got a scorecard that's in front of you. And then to spend some time on really reflecting on where we are now in, in terms of the pandemic and the results of that, so that that grounds us in the, in the conversation that we will have with the balance of our time. Hopefully about an hour to get into some, some, some strategies. Dr. Postaway?
Thank you. On the next slide, we simply see a description of these 2018 to 2019 goals. The separate sheet is in the folder that board members have. And a reminder of the seven overarching goals from the strategic plan. The first has to do with having like a 200 students for college career citizenship readiness. The second is providing opportunities for learning, the actual quality of learning that occurs and the opportunities and interests that other students could imagine that learning. The third is about space, security, inclusion in our environment. The fourth is about talent throughout every aspect of our system. The fifth is about the system, making sure that the system is aligned, they are aligned, they're cohesive and coherent. The next is about continuous progress processes so that we're constantly trying to get better. We may not become the highest achieving district in the state in the next year, but we certainly should be, especially to improve in school district in the state in the year.
The next is about communication, making sure that student progress, the engagement of students and parents, that, that involvement of our communities is improved. So underneath each of these seven strategic objectives from the strategic plan, the board went back looking at the information that was received through the Clemson study, through the accreditation requirements, through the shared future recommendations and mission critical reports. And eventually then established some subbullets under there that became goals. And from those goals, there were specific board actions taken. We didn't try to list all of those actions for you. We picked out a few because we've summarized all of these in documents for the board before. But we created just a sort of what Jeff would call a chicklet chart with a few of them. We did establish data targets in numeracy, literacy, in the amount of growth occurring in, across the district and in each school, and then the school readiness and, excuse me, the college and career readiness levels. Those targets were established for the district and then for each school, looking primarily at quantitative data. So there's been some discussion recently, we watched a webinar about the importance of qualitative data. But when we looked at the quantitative data, those targets were established. Each school had not only specific targets they were to reach, but they were to compare themselves with other schools like them in South Carolina as their comparators, or if there weren't schools in South Carolina that had demographics like their school, then outside the, the state for their comparators. If they're performing at the top of the, the comparison group, then we ask them to look at their competitors. Who's like them in the entire country or the world that's performing better? And what could we learn from those schools? We made a lot of progress that first year that we had a system in place. And I'll talk a little bit about that progress in a moment. But last year, COVID hit and then there were, there were lots of challenges and of course, no data for 2020. And if we had had data, it would not have been very valid. Moving on into implementing the new literacy and math curricula, that was well underway and has stayed in place. Is moving forward under Carolyn Belcher's leadership. We did, we were able to create the model preschool at Mary Ford and employ certified teachers in our preschool programs. We've begun to expand that model now so we're ready to implement it in other communities. We identified the schools we felt needed additional supports and resources. They were termed acceleration schools. I don't know if that's the term we want to keep or not, but those schools did receive a lot of extra support and will continue to do so. We began to address a lot of historical inequities. We revamped the choice program. We redefined the criteria for gifted programs, making sure that at least 5% of the population of children in every single school were participating in gifted programs. We began to provide greater equity in the courses that are offered in the middle schools. This was purely a judgment call on my part, but I think we've made a lot of progress toward a more cohesive, effective board and district leadership team. All, in, in every area, we have a ways to go, but I certainly think we've made progress there. Expanding the advanced academic offerings, working with the College of Charleston, that, that program is in progress and is ready to roll out. We'll be enrolling students for that. That effort is underway now and the coursework will get underway in, in place in the fall. An effective leadership pipeline is under development, slowed down a little bit because of COVID-19. We began a competitive salary structure, not just for leaders, but for every category of employee in the system. The Audit and Finance Committee has passed some recent action on that that will be coming to the board. So that is well underway. We've established the external and internal cultural competency advisory groups or work groups. That work is, has made pretty amazing progress, particularly in light of the challenges of working remotely. Requiring cultural competence training for all personnel was again, well underway before we got slowed down. And an amazing number of new facilities were completed this year. I don't think the school district has ever had so many facilities come online at, in the same year. So that was amazing work. And then of course, developing the information for the 2020 penny sales tax referendum that passed. Two things we didn't get to were creating a district wide Montessori middle school. We pursued that a little and then dropped it because we simply didn't have enough feedback from parents. Parents were somewhat interested, but they wanted to know that a Montessori school would go clear through high school. And that needed a whole lot more study than we were able to give it last year before March. And then we studied the feasibility of, of, of how to better support, combine, merge, or rezone, as were the words the board used in the action of smaller schools. But we did not present that report to the board or move any further in taking any action. So that's just sort of a, a quick scorecard of where we were. And again, you've received more detailed information on each of the board actions throughout the year. I'll move on to the next slide to talk about some of the achievement highlights. If we advance one more slide. Thank you. These are from the summaries that Michelle Simmons and Dr. Joe Williams, Carolyn Belcher have presented to the board. All 14 of our previously unsatisfactory rated schools were rated higher. They moved out of that range and, and, and moved into a higher rating range. That doesn't mean that, that we're finished, but it does mean the teachers in those schools, the, the principals, the, the support staff and the community leaders who were helping made tremendous progress in those schools. Because we did that, our number of excellent, good, and average rated schools improved to the extent that we want to rely on state ratings as a measure of quality for our schools. That's what we have right now. And we made some, some, the schools, I should say, made some really impressive progress. We increased the number and the diversity of students participating in advanced placement courses. And at the same time, maintained a very high pass rate on the college board exam. Here's a statistic we're particularly proud of. The dual enrollment, that is high school and college courses at the same time, almost doubled from 893 students to 672 students. And that's an area we will continue to push. We included some information about the SAT results and the four-year graduation rate. So that's, the, the four-year graduation rate is really important. But it doesn't mean that all of those children have a bright future ahead and that we have definitely connected them with a pathway toward a living wage job. And that's the work that we, we want to continue and press on even harder as we move forward. Moving on, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the context setting for where we think we have found ourselves. We were making some excellent progress. The momentum was there. We had a really good system in place with principals. We were beginning to get the, the rhythm of how to implement continuous progress processes. We were, I would say halfway through the, the easy communication around how to use measurements without feeling threatened by them. But then COVID hit. So these are national data and these are averages. So across the nation, the projection of the learning loss is, is displayed here. The red bars on the left-hand side represent the average reading achievement in the fall of 2019. The blue bars represent average reading achievement in the fall of 2020. So as we've shared with the board before, the decline in reading is not so steep as the decline in math. If we look at the right-hand side of the, of the slide, we see that the decline in mathematics is marked and it's worrisome. And the theory behind this is that whatever one is doing, one has to read. So reading skills are, are increasing or holding steady. But math is a skilled subject that must be taught one-to-one. It's It's more abstract and it's more difficult to learn on one's own. And so without that direct instruction, the mathematic progress slows markedly. The next slide I find more interesting is from the Brookings Institute research. And it helps us see not just the average, on average, what is happening, but what's happening with many of the students who are like ours. So if we look at that top line, this is for reading. We see where the average sixth grader was when school closed. We look at the line in between March and April, we see that the average of where all students were performing. If we track the achievement then of students who are performing in the top one-fourth of their class, we see that their achievement actually continued to rise, even though schools across America were closed for the last quarter of last year. But when we look at the achievement of students who were in the bottom part of their class, the bottom fourth, even the, the bottom half, we see that their achievement decreased. We see the same thing for fourth grade. So this is in reading, even though the average looks as though children held their own in reading. The fact of the matter is that those who were already below grade level fell behind at a rate that is, is dramatic and worrisome. When we look at the mathematics, we see the, the same theory in action that even students who are performing well, lacking that direct instruction, despite the tremendous work our teachers put in. I mean, every teacher will tell you it's much, it was much more stressful trying to teach virtually last spring than it would have been to be in school. And they worked hard, they worked long, hard hours trying to reach children. But even our, our top performing children's achievement was stymied by the school closures. And if you look at fourth grade, you see that the, the lower performing fourth graders actually lost ground. So at the end of the year, the typical last day, they were below where they were when they started fourth grade because they hadn't had that continued practice. So why look at all this? I think as we, as we look ahead, we're going to have to be very intentional about preparing for what we would call, in any other event, disaster recovery. I think it's going to take at least a 36-month, very intentional concerted recovery effort. And those students who were harmed the most are going to need to be in some, some intensive care response from us, where they receive, instead of 180 instructional days, they may need 210 or 220 instructional days. I think the leaders and principals, the principals and teacher leaders, the faculty, staff in those schools, need to be able to look at the calendar, have a lot of autonomy to design what those learning experiences might look like, what that calendar might look like, in concert with the, the families who are, are impacted, who have been impacted most by COVID-19. So while all of our students are going to need some supports to get back on track, those who are impacted the most were those who were scoring below grade level. And we know that children of color are, are more impacted by COVID-19. Families of color are more impacted by COVID-19 than other families. And so for very good reasons, that more of their children haven't been attending school in person. So as we think about how to move forward with an equity and inclusion agenda, I think we're going to have to be really forthright about where we are providing extra supports and why. And I think we, we need to think systemically, as you all have said, about what our response should be. So while I think it was critically important to look at where we were in terms of some of the goals we set, it may be that as we move forward, the board will want to think about not, not simply continuing some of those goals, but modifying them in some ways that would allow you to be more responsive to the immediate needs of children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Postawait. And before we go to the next slide, let me just sort of debrief the first part of Dr. Postawait's presentation with you, and that's around the goals. And ask you, of those goals that you saw, is there any additional, and I, and you can do this at, at your leisure with the superintendent, I'm sure, but were there anything that surprised you, anything that stood out to you, anything that you have questions about? I want to sort of settle those things to Dr. Postawait's point so we can be singularly focused on the next 36 months. So anything from the goals presentations that you have questions about or want clarification on?
I just wanted to make a statement that I think that, in view of all the information that we have, and I just want to thank Dr. Postawait and her staff for bringing this to our attention. But we almost suspected that we were going to see losses across the district. And hopefully, we can work with your team to come up with various solutions on how we need to address this problem, especially in getting reading.
Thank you. Dr. French?
Yes, I wanted to clarify the Brookings Institute data. That's national data?
Yes, ma'am. I should have, I should have made that clear.
Can we have any data from our district that helps us to understand those impacts as well?
We, we do. During the, in the, in the slide deck for Board Orientation Number Two, the second Board Orientation, there are some slides in there that show the early childhood, kindergarten, and first grade data. And in, in February, Carolyn and her staff will be sharing with you our fall versus winter map data.
So, so a great question. More, more to follow on that in, in terms of local CCSD data. But Carolyn, Dr. Postawait, would you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but based on the national, national data, what's your feel for performance of sort of similar groups of students here? I think that's why you pointed that out.
I think we're, we, our results, at least in the fall map, are very similar to the national results across the country in terms of math. Math was lower than reading. There was definitely decline. The decline tended to be on the younger grades.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I think, Ms. Green, you had a, you had a...
Yeah, probably it's not appropriate for the time commitment we have for today, but I think it would be interesting, and I hate asking for anything else, but it would be interesting to see the progress we've made on the goals. You know, we've got the, like, the seven strategic plan goals. I mean, it was kind of a report card to say, like, maybe we are going to discuss that. But a report card on these were the goals that, at that point, this is where we are on that particular goal right now, at some point.
Yes, ma'am. We, most of the goals in those quarterly mission critical updates that we gave, most of the goals were in there, but you're not the first board member to point out that it would have been easier to follow had we tracked that back underneath the goals instead of putting it over in mission critical. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any, anyone else on, in terms of goals or any of the, the pandemic COVID-19 data? Okay, so what, what I'm, and we're ahead of schedule, so that's, that's fantastic. We, we can engage in some, in some dialogue. And so what we want to spend now is the next, probably hour, really discussing this question of this board, and that is, what can we do? And, and Dr. Fraser, you, you, you sort of teed this up for us. What can the board and the staff be doing now in terms of planning for the inevitability that, one, we will emerge out of the COVID pandemic and at some point, we will return to some normalcy in terms of school attendance and, and all of the things that we battle with now. Vaccines are, are going to get here, are already here in many cases. And so what does that, what does that playbook look like? I, I sort of took the, took the writing off the, the board up here, but if you could imagine that you had a blank slate as a board, notwithstanding the fact that you, you, you've got a lot of ongoing goals and strategy and tactics that are, that are going on every day that, that's being tracked. That's why this wonderful staff is here. They're, they're, they're on that. But we challenged ourselves for the next hour and 10 minutes or so to say, we've got a blank slate of, of paper up here to imagine what we can do to recover what may have been lost. We'll get data to sort of verify where we are, to reimagine maybe some of the structural challenges, issues that we face as a school district. And knowing that, you have a chance to really create the framework for what the next 36 months of this school district will be and do with a couple of levers that we can talk about a little bit later. But what does that look like? So I've got a couple of sort of questions just to get us started. But this is a time where I'm going to really ask for your ideas, your thoughts, your perspectives. Probe those. We'll capture those up on the, on the sheet of paper up here and explore those. And then we'll come back and, and wrap our time up. But if you can go to the next slide, the first question I have for everyone, and I think we've had some, some of this already, but just, just so we're, we all level set. What's your reaction to the data? It's national. There are some parallel to what we might be experiencing here. Certainly, you'll, you'll have some of that information and have more clarity as the school year goes on. But what's your reaction to the data? And, and this is a chance where I, I've always secretly wanted to be a, us teachers to call on people. And so now I may call on you if, if we don't engage. And I, I think I see a willing participant in, in Ms. Courtney Waters up there. So Courtney, I will give you the first, the first guidance. What, what's your reaction to what you saw?
Sure. I think I was called upon. I don't think I raised my hand, but I, but I got you. I'm with you. I, I actually have to say, I, I wasn't surprised, and I don't actually think it's terribly different in terms of trends than it was before COVID. And I, I think for a long time, I've felt like we need to, you know, blow up the system in a lot of ways. And when I say blow up the system, just rethink the way that we do school. I always, I, I've always kind of struggled with the way that we do intervention, for instance. We know there are so many students that fall behind, but we pull them out of class to do the intervention. And so they're missing instruction and they're also trying to catch up at the same time. And I've always thought, why don't we come up with some other opportunity for them? Which is why I actually love the idea that now COVID has brought, introduced the idea that perhaps school days, maybe that we're in need of more of them for our, our most precious students. And that doesn't mean that we, precious, most, students who are most in trouble, I should say. All of them are precious. But, um, you know, I, I think we should be thinking about things like that. How do we do it entirely differently so that we don't keep getting the same results? And so I wasn't surprised by the data, but I think it has finally brought to light and brought a sense of urgency to the fact that we need to get creative and do some things entirely differently.
Thank you for that. Ms. Copley, I know you're still on the call, and I, I know you're present in the room, so I want to give you the next word if you, if you want to react to the data, any information that we just shared.
Excuse me. Actually, I do. Again, Courtney must be all inside of my head today. I want to echo exactly what she said. I do wish that we could just do away with some things, certain criteria, just testing at the present moment, because it all is leveled. To just see, and, and not actually, again, I'm old school. Ask our children what it is they want to be and meet them where they're at, so it, in terms of curriculum. And I think it's not, and if it makes sense, I'm sorry. If our children want to be teachers, then we give them curriculum that is going to be education and teacher-based. But if our teacher, our children want to be something else, then I think our curriculum should be different. So I think in terms right now, I just wish we could just switch the curriculum around and make it meet the children, instead of us giving them the curriculum that it is that we want to acquire, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I see you guys are ready to get into maybe solutions, and that's good. But I want to hear, hear a few more reactions. Ms. Darby, and then Dr. French, and then Ms. Hederich, if, if you don't mind.
I was not surprised. I, I think it's on trend to, before COVID. And I think, I think we're probably, it's going to be even more devastating when we get data, you know, for the rest of this fall and the rest of the year that we're teaching in such a different state. So it's, it's not, I'm not surprised, but also I, it makes, I'm worried about us, I'm worried that we're going to lose this generation of kids. And that's not the right way to say it, but I'm worried that our kids who are in school right now across the world are, it's going to be really hard to catch up. So we got to really think out of the box about how to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. French?
Yes, and I realized I, I actually meant to ask if we see similar drop-offs after summer. And typically, they're probably not as dramatic, you know, when we come back to school, and they probably impact the different strata of the students in the same way. But I also want to say, yeah, I'm definitely not surprised. It's been something that we've been hearing about across the country. And I, I think that we need to realize that we're not, we're not alone and that we should work, reach out to other districts and find out what they are, they are thinking about too. Let's share resources. Let's, let's find ways to support each other. And I think that, that we can even do that within our district by saying, look, here's some teachers who've come up with some really creative, say, math curriculum that isn't all abstract, that has a lot of concrete things like cooking or, you know, carpentry, or some of the tools that you see in the Montessori classrooms. Just some more concrete ways to learn that math and make, and internalize it for students. But to have ways for teachers to be able to share their ideas for lessons plans with each other. So, and to make sure we're supporting those teachers in every school with the resources they need to use those creative ideas.
Thank you. Hederich?
Thank you. I'm not surprised about, by the results either, but looking forward to and optimistic about this session because it is our job to look beyond COVID and establish solutions and goals and objectives that we can make sure are getting our students back on track. So excited for what's to come.
Thank you. Anyone else want to react to the data or the information? No, let me share. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, one thing I found interesting, because it's been on my mind, the data's not a surprise. And I was in a state, I was meeting with some state folks over the weekend. It's also not unique, as Dr. French said, but I am glad to, to see, and had hoped we would see, that there will become an intense focus. We've had goals. Districts have had goals since time began. They've been big, audacious, hairy goals, et cetera. But I think if anything else, I was glad to see that there was a tailor or a tail end of the discussion that said, because of COVID, we are really going to have to take this concept of goals and turn it into true actionality inside of students' education. And, you know, knowing there's going to have to be a period of time in which our complete focus is on making up so that we're not solely focused on big hairy goals for the future, but there's got to be a concentrated effort on making up and writing what has happened due to COVID.
Thank you. Dr. Fraser?
Yes, I think that COVID exacerbated the problem with the primary system before COVID. And what we had was a system that intentionally separated our schools by class and class. And we tend to overlook that because that's a very difficult topic to talk about, racism. And so now we're going to blame it on COVID. The reason why black children are not reading is because of COVID. But we were already behind before COVID. And what we did not do, we were not proactive. We intentionally went and put our funding into magnet and charter schools, which really, really made the problem worse. And now we have to come back to the table and maybe look at extending our, our school year or the day. Take a look at reallocating resources from those schools who are already doing well. Because you can take an academic magnet student... Because you can take an academic magnet student, they're going to do well wherever they go just because you're already dealing with kids who have a chapter class. But what about the Baptist Hill students who are not doing well? The North Charleston students who are not doing well, and his parents are poor. So another issue that we need to deal with, we need to get our communities involved. It can't be just our school district and the leaders here going to take the initiative to make sure that we fix all the problems in the poor communities. And I can remember when I was here, we had reading coaches in these schools, where reading coaches came in, told students how to work with those students on an individual basis. I just received a call from a person who is working intensively in a North Charleston school. And he told me, he said, he called a 10th grader, and the 10th grader couldn't read. So what about those kids who will be graduating that we have just passed on because of that age and because we cannot hold them back? What are we going to do with them? Just let them go through the system and graduate without their ability to read? So we do have a complicated problem, and I think breaking down the resources and how we allocate our resources and look at the intentional misappropriation of funds that we've done over the years to address the problem and how racism has played into the way that we have allocated our resources.
Thank you for that. Reverend Mack, I'm sorry I skipped over you earlier.
Oh, no problem at all. I don't mind being the last. But there's no question about the fact that if COVID had not played a part in the number and the data that, not only that we've seen presented today, but it has just added on to what has already been an issue that we've been dealing with in the district. And not to belabor the conversation, but I'd like to give you an equation. And that is, more access divided by closing the gap will equal success. If we do those things, if we provide more access, we can close the gap. And by closing the gap, we can have success given within those measures. And in the presentation and the numbers and the data that have been presented to us, we will find that we will be able to not only close the gap, but be able to bring those kids up to par to where they need to be. But we have to, we have to give more access. We have to do more on top of what we're doing now. And I do understand, you know, dollars play a role, or the budget plays a role in everything that we do. But we have to take bold measures in putting those resources where they need to be, redefining those things so that we can close this gap. And closing the gap meaning success for everyone. When I said everyone, I mean, not only, not only the student body themselves, but is success for our community, our business. So we play a major role when we close this gap in getting our kids to where they need to be. Because a student that cannot fill out an application based on the fact that they can't read will not be able to fill out an application, will not be able to apply for a job if they cannot follow the simple directions. So our, our greater impact that we have here on the school level in providing the access and the resources will definitely close those areas to where we have been struggling with for some time with our student. And I don't mind, and CFO may cringe when I say this, but I do not mind adding the dollars to where they need to be to make it happen. At the end of the day, I would rather, I would rather say what needs to happen and then tell me what the dollar amount is at the end. And we try to figure out how we, how we make that happen. But that's where I'm at. I just want to give that equation to you.
Thank, thank you for that, Reverend Mack. And I'm, you can't see under my mask, but I'm smiling because as a person who has a board, I would love for my board chair to say something like that. Because I could certainly give him all kinds of ideas for how we might be able to appropriate resources. Look, I want to, we've got about an hour left, and I want to reorient us to what we just heard and starting from where, where we were. And we started today talking about how we're feeling, and we use words like perplexed, overwhelmed, heaviness, optimistic, distressed. When we, when we saw the data, we said things like, we're not surprised, we're worried about, frankly, the fact that these problems persisted before COVID-19. COVID-19 has sort of exposed it in ways that are hard to hide, even if you aggregate all the information. It's just hard to hide what you see, can't unsee it now. So it calls us to do something about it. And then we talked about sort of some of the systemic work that needs to, needs to be done. And I hear that and what you're saying now in terms of your themes, in terms of what you said. And my question to you, and this is an open-ended question, I just want to take five minutes on this, and I think Reverend Mack teed this up nicely. Are there any things in terms of addressing this moment, the next 36 months or so, the disaster recovery plan, are there any things for this board that are off limits in terms of what you are willing to put your personal courage on the line to make happen as it relates to disaster recovery for the students of Charleston County School District? What are those things that are just a non-starter for you that I want to identify right up front so that we can start to have a real conversation about what we are willing to do to get some things done? So what are those things? Just take a minute to think about that, and then I'll annotate them up. You don't have any now that you want to share publicly? That's fine. But, but now, but, but we, I do want you to articulate that to the superintendent. What are those non-starters for you as a board member? If we go down this path, I will not be supportive of it. If we don't have these things engaged, I will not be supportive of it. That's what I want to identify. So let's put those big sort of things out there right now so that frees us up to envision and imagine where we can. Take just a minute to think about that.
I'm going to have to think about this one because I
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to go ahead and start because I feel very strongly about it. And my number one issue that I will not support is that I do not wish to see us continue to farm out our problems, problems to for-profit organizations.
Can you be more explicit?
I'm not saying too much, I think everyone knows exactly what you mean.
Could I ask you to clarify if you mean businesses or do you mean nonprofits?
Nonprofit organizations.
Okay, and/or both? Yeah, okay.
I have to say, I'm not clear on that. I mean, are you talking about organizations that the district does business with or specifically related to schools? Or I know that you don't want to get too deep, but if, can you, opposed to some of the actions that the district has already taken and trying to alleviate the problem?
Okay.
It's a people's move.
Okay, I think I've captured what I can. We may probe on that just a little bit more.
So are you asking us for non-starters, of things we want or things we don't want?
Either or.
Okay.
Because there are going to be some of you who strongly believe that if we're going to really make this change, we need to have these things. And like Dr. Fraser just said, there are some of you who believe that if we go down this path, I'm just not going to support it. And so I just like to sort of put those guardrails up and maybe, and it's a point of consideration. Obviously, we're not solving anything today, but I think for the board, it's, it's going to be important for us to be able to think, you know, courageously about what we are capable of to just put those guardrails up. And so that's what I'm talking about. And I see Ms. Coates and then Ms. Waters.
So I guess my non-starter isn't particularly a non-starter, but, because I will, I will entertain anything on the table, but I will have short patience for rapid changes to this plan. We're going to go down this road, and we're going to say we need a concentrated action. I will get frustrated if that concentrated action shifts dramatically and we're asked to approve something to change that action in three months, or we get seven months down the road. But if we're going to go down this kind of clarion call, then we have to be committed to the action and the plan because there will be forces outside the guardrails that are going to want to shift those. I would expect anticipation of that and a clear consideration of those before we start rolling this out. Because we're talking about, I think you put it best, disaster recovery. What, if we go down this road, it will not look like anything we've ever done before. So every single human involved in that will say, I've never seen this before, by definition. So my clarion call would be, you've got to be prepared for the, and anticipate the issues because if we're going down this road, we've got to stay inside those guardrails.
Yeah, you're going to get pushed back on anything you do. Y'all already know that by nature of who you are and where you are. That's going to happen. But what I hear you say is a commitment from this board and the staff to sticking to the plan. Now, obviously
There will have to be shifts, but, and I clarify that by dramatic changes, but, right, because you will have to shift, the plan will have to be alive. But we've had a history in this district of, I mean, our shifts look a whole lot like just leaving one interstate and going all the way over to the next one.
That's right. Ms. Waters?
Yes. So a non-starter for me would be too heavy on the qualitative side versus the quantitative. And I know that's been named, but I think coming out of this, it's going to be really important to make it very transparent and clear to everybody, parents, community. We started here, and our goal in the next year to two years is to go this place. And I think it needs to be numeric.
Good one.
So balance between the qualitative
Yeah, I would say
And the quantitative data?
And transparency in presenting that.
And transparency is the same, right? So whatever we're using to keep score, everyone should know what that is.
Right.
And everyone should agree upon that, and then we should hold ourselves accountable to it. Dr. French?
Thanks. I want to actually come back to some of what Dr. Fraser was talking about, and I'll be a little bit more specific in my comments, that I don't want, a real non-starter for me would be to have an outside operator, nonprofit, whatever, come in and run a school. I'm not, I'm really not interested in privatizing anymore of our major functions like food services. I really think that we should relook at transportation. I don't like that it has been privatized. And so those are some issues for me that are non-starters. But on the positive side of that, what I'm trying to get at, we're a public school district, we're a community, and I want us to work on these problems as a community, not just of students, but of our teachers and all of our staff, our certified staff as well. So I want us to find ways to work together to create these solutions and look closely at the genuine community school models that help us communicate better with what the needs are at each specific school so that we are providing that equitable resource allocation.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else with a non-starter? Places where we, that's your guardrail, you want to make that known now so that when we do get into these conversations, we know where people are. Go ahead, Ms. Darby.
Well, ten, two for me. I think because of COVID, I would hope that we are all on the same page, that we're going to need something above and beyond the 180-day typical model that we've had. And we're going to have to do something more to get kids caught up. That'd be one. So, I mean, I think I hear that from people.
So you're saying a non-starter for you is something that does not
Right.
Include some innovational, true things such as extended school years or whatever. If it comes back and says, we're just going to do better in the next year, that's a non-starter.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do exactly what we've been doing and think that we're going to catch kids up. And another non-starter for me is, is we have 22 months, the nine of us here, and I really feel like we have got to be focused on the what we're doing and not so much the how and the who. And so I really, if we get into all of that, I don't remember how Cindy said it, I want, I'm going to be constantly coming back to what is our role as a board? What are we doing? The what, that big, the big governance piece versus the operational piece?
Same. You, as a, as a, as a sort of operating sort of mindset for this, you want, you want this board to stay focused on the big picture?
Yes. Because we won't get anything done, and 22 months from now, we'll have election, and we might have nine new people. And I want the nine of us here now to be able to have really impacted our 50,000 students and made the changes that everybody's talked about, but we can't do it if we're in the weeds.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say something, please.
Yes, thank you.
Just to say that what I'm absolutely against is that I'd be against anything that would continually perpetuate the racially divide that we have been in our suffering. Anything that's going to continue to privatize our schools and, again, shut out the ones that we continue to say are the ones that are most needed, which are the African-American children. Outside sources, stop bringing in outside sources and let our community and, you know, the community and the parents and the teachers do what is necessary. And again, in two years, where do we go? Our children are not learning. Our children have not been learning. We know that. So what can we do? Like, what do we do to do that? I just really wish we could, like, anything with criteria, like they say, we have to revamp the 180 days. I think we just have to revamp the criteria and some of the curriculum as well. Like, we just can't think that it's going to be okay if we don't do anything in terms of criteria and curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Copely. Ms. Green?
You know, for me, I want to leave all the doors open because I want information, data, circumstances to dictate decisions that we need to make. And maybe something that I personally don't, would prefer us not do, if it makes sense, then I want to be able to say I'm objective enough to look at all of the options. And the other thing, I think, if we could, just for the sake of discussion, if nothing else, look at COVID as an opportunity because we have, we know we've had some work to do. So look at COVID and say, because of COVID, maybe these things that we are doing, we wouldn't have done. So, you know, we could maybe just dispense a saying because of COVID, but look at it as an opportunity that we could take advantage of.
Good mindset. It's to see this for what it is, an opportunity to really do the deep, hard work that needs to be done. It's calls on leaders to do. I want to give anyone else who wants to chime in on this the last word before we move into solutions.
Let me just add one thing, Mr. Goss, is that I'm with Joyce with leaving all the doors open, but let me just say a little bit more about my equation of more access divided by closing the gap is equal success. And that simply means that if we have to look at every possible avenue in trying to close this gap and get our kids to where they need to be. So, you know, if this is an inclusive of, use for an example, Saturday school, summer bridge programs, after-school tutorial extension, or even creating a program of those kids that at the end of the school year that does not meet the bar to where they need to be, that we create this summer program to get them ready for the next grade level once those kids identify. So there are a number of things that we can do, right? But we need, we need resources to make that happen. We need to, and whatever that resource may be, it may be a partnership with someone, I don't know. But for sure, we know that we've been talking about, at least for the six years I've been on this board, about how do we close the achievement gap and how do we bring kids to the point of where they need to be in gaining one to the point of where they need to be in gaining one to one and a half year of growth? And if we have not met that, then of course, we have to change course some way, somehow, in identifying some new measures we need to put in place to be able to do that. So we definitely will have to look at more broader options of closing that gap and identifying more access and resources for our kids.
Thank you, Dr. French.
I just wanted to add, I really appreciate what Ms. Green said about learning from our experience through COVID. I think there's a lot that we can learn from that. And also wanted to say, I misspoke earlier when I said certified employees. I meant classified employees, not just, you know, we often just only focus on our teachers and principals and admin, but we need to include everybody in our community.
Very well said. So there's going to be a lot of debate, discussion, and I know the superintendent and her team will make quick work of this process with dispatch. But I want to spend the next half hour talking about the what. You've already identified some of those up here when you talked about sort of maybe lengthening in the school year, Saturday, so some of these ideas. But I think, I think, Ms. Darby, you said it. This school board is a unique opportunity because you do essentially, maybe 22 months, maybe it's more like 18 months.
Right.
Before you start campaigning, if you choose to stay on the board.
Yeah, that won't be me.
But if, if that's the case, and you have this blank sheet of paper, and you have the ability to provide leadership that will inevitably change the trajectory of this school district and those students beyond your tenure as a school board, then what? How disruptive are you willing to be and what are you willing to do to make that happen? As I want to spend the next half hours, half hour, sort of delving into the whats, and then maybe prioritizing some of that for you, and then close us out just with consensus on maybe the top two or three ideas that we want to carry forward, if you will. And this is not a lot of time, so it'll take more vetting. But, but let's focus on the what. The how, I think you're going to work there, but let's get those big ideas up front. And, and as you, as you have already established, there's some non-starters for you. That's going to be dealing with more the how in some instances, how you, how you execute on, so this recovery and all that stuff, that's the, that's the how. But, but what is it that you're trying to get done? Okay? So, matter of fact, let's start, Ms. Coakley, I know you're there. Let's start with you, and because I want to make sure you stay engaged. Let's start with you on the what. What, what would you like to see as we focus on the next 36 months of disaster recovery? What should we be doing as a school district?
Oh, definitely engaged and listening, not out of sight and out of mind. The curriculum, how can we level it to where it's not letting anyone in? Not disqualifying anyone? That way we can exactly just meet our children and just accelerate them and get them where they need to be. That's what I'm just going to continue to say, you know? And stop focusing on what it is they're not learning, I guess, and a little bit more focused on what it is that they have actually learned even throughout COVID. So there are some things in the world that testing don't actually test, and our children have become a little bit more resilient through a lot, you know, through all of this. So those are some things I'll just continue to say, you know, as far as curriculum and our standards, how can we make them fit our community and our children to allow them to be where they need to be?
I think, I think what I heard you say is that we need to take a hard look at the curriculum as it's offered and the standards by which it's evaluated and, and make sure that that is appropriate and accessible to all children? And that's a big question mark at the end of that because I want to make sure I.
Exactly, all children, correct.
Okay. Okay. I've got curriculum and standards up here, and I think we've got, we're capturing those other thoughts. What, what else? Ms. Hatter?
I'm sorry.
You have something else, Ms. Coakley?
And disciplinary standards, I'll just throw that in there too. And that's.
For me, it's communication, being able to really connect with our community as a whole, being transparent about what we're doing and for them to understand, I mean, our district is really big and it's hard to communicate the different things that are happening throughout the district. So I think communication is something that we need to focus on as a board.
Okay. Say more about that. So obviously, the result of this work, we hope will be some very, I like to use the word game-changing because I'm a sports fanatic, game-changing plays, if you will, strategy. Are you suggesting that the board should, or the district should communicate that effectively? Say more about communication as a what that needs to be changed or innovated in this process?
I'm a big proponent of partnerships and collaboration, and I think the community is a big piece of the district and making decisions for students. If we're going to get to that equity piece, we have to be able to communicate with all parents and students. And so looking at different outlets, I know that COVID creates some challenges, but looking beyond in that ideal world, looking beyond PTAs of how we get the broader community involved in the decision-making.
I want to, I want to, well, let me just probe this right now because I think, I think it was actually Dr. Postaway who described it as disaster recovery. And quite honestly, when you do disaster recovery, disaster planning, the people responsible for that are really the people in this room. And while absolutely the community has to be engaged, has to be involved, has to be read in, ultimately, decisions that get made about the allocation of resources, the strategic direction if you go in, how frankly disruptive and innovative you will be is your, your prerogative as a board. And I want to, I want to just orient you to the fact that you will absolutely communicate with the broader community, get community feedback and buy-in, but you should understand and know, and I know you do realize it, that ultimately, whatever this plan is, whatever it will become, will be the work of this board with community input, with community ideas, but you will ultimately own that, that, that whole process. And so, again, from a communication standpoint, I've got up here, I want to make sure I adequately capture your thoughts. Again, we're looking at how we do this disaster recovery next 36 months. And what I'm hearing you say is that communication and engagement, not just parents, not just students, but broader community stakeholders, is imperative for partnerships and such going forward. Yeah. Okay. Dr. French?
So you mentioned how disruptive are we willing to, to be in our thinking? And so I'm thinking of, if we really upset the apple cart a little bit, let's work more from the bottom up and let's give a lot more autonomy to our teachers in terms of how they're teaching, how they're collaborating with each other, not just at their schools, but laterally across the district. How about, you know, knowing that a lot of standardized testing has cultural discrepancies in it? How can we look at reducing the amount of time standardized testing takes from us? It takes weeks away from instruction in the spring. Let's, let's fix that. We need data, but we can get data based on what the teachers are doing. And we also need to measure a lot of the things that we say that we're very interested in, social and emotional learning. We're not measuring that at all. And if that's important to us, for people to be able to get out in the world and be responsible adults, we need to work on that as well and understand how to measure it responsibly. But I think that it's really important to me that we give a lot, a lot more support to the teachers. They, you know, they have to spend their own income to bring in creative solutions for teaching in their classroom. They shouldn't have to do that. Let's protect their planning time. Let's find ways to use what we've learned from COVID, like how can Zoom help teachers help each other? Maybe one teacher has a great lesson plan and she wants to zoom it to all the social studies classes in her school, and then those other teachers are developing other lesson plans with extra planning time. Let's think about, you know, bigger things like that.
Yep. Thank you. Any, any more for you though?
I'm like, ah, just got it down, about four things here. But I think my number one, where, you know, who is, well, and I want to be specific here because I'm a student, 23, and when I see that the curriculum offering for Baptist Field High School and look at what being offered, and my pleasure, at Baptist Field, we have following, and when I go to another school, I see courses like that. So that we need to provide standard opportunities in our new school because I think my person, if I'm in Baptist Field, I don't have to leave Baptist Field to get a good education. I have to stay there and send people to that, offer at another school we visit, to go to Baptist Field, and then I won't have to go to a local college to the Baptist Field. First of all, we need to identify those schools that we, just the disaster is always a taking a toll on. I think that's the first step. Then we need to reallocate the resources to address those particular schools. And then we need to get our community more involved in the decision-making process so that they can be a part of what our plans are for the school.
The top, I'm going to say this for you. I mean, the top thing on my list is cultural competency and equity. And that is a huge what, you know, I mean, I think that in living in Charleston, South Carolina, we are going to have to be disruptive to get where we need to with that. But that's, that's a piece that's really important for me. Another, and then I have one other, but I don't know if this is too much of in the how, but I, I'd really like to see, you know, a real school leadership pipeline, like for assistant principals and principals, like an internship or, I'm not sure how, somebody else I'm sure could do that better, way better than whatever I could say, Carolyn, for sure, in Dr. Postaway, but I think that I'd love to see that because I, I think the strongest schools we have have the strongest principal.
So let me, let me, Ms. Waters, I'll come to you, and then I think, looks like Reverend Mack has something to them as quotes. And I just want to, since we're like halfway into the whats, I just want you to examine the whats right now. I was going to take a point of facilitator privilege and just ask you, I don't know if you can see these things, but of these whats, based on what Dr. Postaway presented and the work that you already started undertaking in the school district, what's new? What's different? What's game-changing? What, what's going to, what's going to recover what our students may be losing right now?
Nothing.
So I want to reorient us to that idea that we're not surprised, we're worried, we can't keep doing the same thing. Somebody even said we need to blow up the current situation and say, we've got about 15, 20 minutes left. You have a chance to, to be creative? What?
So. So, and that's exactly where I was thinking, what, it has to be tangible what. I mean, I, the theories are correct. We have to have these things and we have to have these beliefs that ground the work we do, but I think that we have to do two things. I think we have to rethink seat time. There has been a shift away from seat time, and I think that should continue maybe after 36 months. But right now, we have realized that seat time is incredibly important to a large number of our students. And if that means extended school days or shifting down school days or altering what a school day looks like, that's a real what. It may not be that we can have seat time from eight to three in every single building. If we go to this thing, the community school concept, that may not work for every community. So there may be staff that works different hours than staff that works somewhere else, embedded within a school day if that's best for the seat time. A second thing would be extending the year or extending the funding to, to have employees working more than 190 days a year, to try to crunch five years' worth of learning into three sets of 180 days, when we know that we barely get three sets of learning into three sets of 180 days is a recipe for disaster. We're not going to catch people up in the same timeframe that we have been unable to keep them on standard before. And we know that there is a population in which there are some opportunities for online and Zoom. And in North Charleston, my representatives with me, we've discussed some of those, but we also have learned for some students, we've got to have some serious seat time, one-on-one educator to student, and I think that's a real what that we're going to have to see in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
Thank you. So a couple that come up for me, one is that, and I know the district has started down the path of cultural competency, and I know Ms. Darby brought it up, but I'm thinking about using that as a lever and a lens through which you do everything else. One of the things that we do a lot of times is we train on things and it's like, okay, I got the training and then I take it and I go do, you know, my job. But really, I think, I think cultural competency becomes a difference maker when you actually understand that it's not the thing that I'm teaching, it's the people that I'm teaching, and it's my ability to relate to them. And I think, I think, I think it would go a long way if it were seen as the problem solver and not just a piece, because it's really not just a piece. I think we've had a lot of really intelligent people coming up with solutions to education for a long time, but the part we haven't dealt with is the, the human part that has sort of tainted the structural pieces that we have. I think also shifting the way that we do data reporting from, you know, oftentimes we come and we, and everybody loves to do this, this is human nature, and we've got to do some of this, but everybody reports on what's going well. I think having a dashboard of how we're moving the lowest performing student and, and the students who have the most recurring disciplinary infractions, if we make that transparent all the time, I think it drives people to always want to be doing things to, to solve for those things. And the last piece that I would mention is, and I don't care what this looks like, right? And I'm going to say this very plainly, this is not a political statement because none of this is that for me. But we talk all the time about bringing students real-world experiences, but we say we don't want anybody but the school district doing things. Those two things don't go together. You've got to bring people who do the work every day and to inspire people to show them what it looks like and what it looks like from a contractual standpoint, I don't care. I think though, that we have to allow people into our doors to inform our children and to show them what they're not traditionally getting. Yeah, those three things would be the biggest ones for me.
If I may.
Yeah. Let me get to Reverend Mack because I think we had him in the queue and then we'll come up to you as quotes.
The only thing I would add is, and use your words, Mr. Gosse, game changer for me was mission critical. We have established some guidelines and goals within mission critical that will address some of what we're already talking about. And I think the key to it is if we, if we stayed a course with mission critical and resolving some of those issues that we have already outlined, I think we. Uh, I, I think we would capture a number of what we have, uh, talked about here today. And I do appreciate every comment, uh, that board members have given. Uh, but I, I, I think we have made some bold changes just from deriving from the mission critical pieces. Uh, within our district, uh, that I think will, if we continue to move forward. Uh, with, uh, those initiatives that we have outlined, that has been outlined, we will see even, uh, greater, uh, changes. Uh, as we move forward on top of what, uh, all of the other board members have, have expressed here today. So, uh, that will be, uh, my big thing is to, is for us to execute the mission critical piece, uh, to the full extent. And this board has already, uh, given, uh, considerable amount of, uh, funding, uh, toward that initiative. And I, I think we are to, uh, continue that course.
Uh, Reverend Matt, were there any specific items on the mission critical list that stands out to your mind? That directly relates to this, uh, conversation about disaster recovery that, that we need to just lift up here in terms of the whats? The, the, you don't, you don't have to. I think we, I just wanted to make sure that if you had something in mind, that we captured that.
So I don't want you to, uh, specifically pull out anyone over the necks within that mission critical. Because I have fully adopted myself with the whole piece. And I think, uh, it, it, it definitely feeds into, into what we see as. What is the, the bigger broader picture for the district that are moving forward? Uh, so if, if, and I, and I'm glad you gave me that out. Because I want to stand hold to the full ledger that we have identified there in that mission critical.
Yeah, thank you.
That's fair.
Matt, add one?
Yes.
To, to, I think we just need to have mission critical in every district. So we, it was primarily focused downtown North Charleston, West Ashley. Mount Pleasant's not going to be. Absent from what we're experiencing with COVID.
Yeah, so we need to add, add encompass the whole district.
Correct. Agreed.
I'm with it, just as long as we continue with it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree with you.
Can I ask you to clarify how? Are these twenty eighteen, twenty goals? Are they the same thing as mission critical? Because we don't have that right in front of us. And I just, I want to better understand what. You think is going right with that, that we should keep doing. I don't, because I have a really different perspective of how those ideas came out and I'm confused.
Who are you asking that question to, Dr. French?
Yeah, I think Dr. Paul's right. You want to address it?
Right, these goals were adopted earlier in, um. They were adopted at the end of two thousand and eighteen or the beginning of, of two thousand and nineteen. And there was a lot of. A lot of feedback that came from communities and then board work on defining mission critical. So there, I don't know of any mission critical goal that can't be un, um, uncoupled and placed back under here. But there's not a direct one-to-one correlation. And that's why I was answering Mrs. Green saying we gave the updates on mission critical. But we never unbound them, took them apart and said, here's where this fits back under this particular strategy or goal. So the best document to do that is that multi-colored document that we, we gave out at orientation that sort of walks through and says, here, here's how we got from these goals. Yeah, that one. Yeah, that walks, that we're giving that at the orientation. Yeah, that, that, that walks clear through. So, um, we do have confusion of terms. And we'll have to go back and sort of figure out. How to reconcile that.
Sure.
So I think the last thing that I would say, because. Yeah, I'm really honing into the question is what? And the question is what is different? And there was, and I want to talk about the what instead of the result of what the what gets us. So I think my things may sound a little bit more minute, but they're whats that I believe will get us to some of the, the goals that have been listed. Specifically, this has to be multi-tiered, multi-district, state level and, um, a, a, across the state. So if Charleston County comes out and says, this is what we think we want to do with, with disaster recovery. And there have been some great ideas about extending school days, reducing testing requirements, reducing test preparation. Um, those sorts of things. If the state legislature doesn't pass specific legislation for that, we're not going to do it. Because they're going to mandate the testing. We don't, they're, you know, the testing is mandated by a body external to CCSD. The funding mechanisms are mandated by bodies that are external to CCSD. And I think that if, while, while I certainly believe that your larger districts. Can't have resources to have bigger plans. If this doesn't involve all the districts across the state in a multi-tiered, multi-level effort, it's going to get stopped somewhere. And, and I, I, I think one of the things that comes up is if you were to look at. The roughly one hundred and forty bills introduced that have to do with education right now. None of them that I have seen thus far, they, they talk about. Um, they don't talk about this in this language. Let's just say that they're not looking at, wait a minute. This means we need to fund teachers better to create more avenues for seat time. That's not on their radar. We need to reduce, and I thought Dr. French said it, the number of days that they spend during a school year. Preparing for a test because we need to spend those days on this. They're not introducing legislation to do that. Which means that if they don't start talking about that soon, we all know how it works, we won't be doing those different in August. So without including, and without any plan that doesn't come back and say there's external stakeholders. Who make those decisions involved, it's not going to be, uh, it's not going to be a game-changing plan.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and I think, uh, you, you have introduced one of those sort of coordinating things. That if you're going to be disruptive like this, there may be some policy or legislative action that supports the work. And so I think identifying those things, I'm looking at the team now, staff team. Looking at those things as you sort of flesh this out more thoroughly. Uh, and where there needs to be intentional legislative engagement, I think it's going to be important to, to the success of whatever you decide to do. And, and quite honestly, um, as one of the largest school districts in the state, I think you can provide some leadership to the rest of state, frankly. Um, anything else before I try to wrap us up and, and maybe prioritize some of the bolder. Uh, items that we've talked about today in terms of the whats? How are you feeling?
Better, better.
That's two people. Overwhelmed, distressed, optimistic. That's, that's, that's better, Ms. Green. That's better.
Well, I'm appreciative of the, uh, board members' comments and, uh, their viewpoints on, on where they see where we are. Uh, the whats, the ifs, and how do we get there? Uh, I think it's important, um, that these viewpoints are shared and collectively we can begin to disseminate. How, how do we move forward, uh, from that information? So I think it was very, uh, helpful, uh, and healthy, uh, to, uh, working together moving forward. On, on where everyone's standing and how we bring all of those ideas together to, uh, to make it work, uh, for the district as a whole.
I, I'd like to say, as somebody who's been on the board for six years and who's sat in that audience for probably ten before that, watching people. We listen and we all don't agree and some of, we're sometimes polar opposites on some issues. But I've never felt more confident. I've lived in Charleston for thirty-two years, never felt more confident that. This group of nine people could find consensus and get some things done in the next, hopefully twenty-two months. I, I feel very confident in that. So I look forward to working with everybody to do that.
Ms. Darby, thank you for that, because I want to try to build at least some, uh, early consensus on maybe one or two items that you described as the what. Um, to prioritize for Dr. Postaway and his staff as they think about, uh, this work going forward. Um, and that is, I mean, there, there are probably twelve items over there and three items over there. And I just want to review those. And standard, review those very quickly, uh, in terms of the, the whats you have described. I think there's probably something that's more administrative and, uh, informational. And that's the alignment of the mission critical work that was done with some of these broad goals in the matrix and just really clarifying that. Dr. Postaway, you talked about that. I think, I think you can accomplish that, no doubt in my mind. Um, I think we should lift this one up, the coordination across the state. But any, anything that you do that's going to be disruptive, that may have. Um, state level policy implications, we, we should certainly, uh, factor that in. What? That, that this work will entail, because it will require then some investment with your legislative, our liaison and others to get, to get the work done. Um, we didn't talk about it, but, uh, funding. Um, state, federal, local dollars, you, you just got the referendum passed on the penny sales tax for facilities. I think as you think about, uh, this work and how to, um, do it. Um, you might consider how you're going to use those dollars. I think it's always better to have a plan. Then at some point in the next six months, Dr. Postaway, there's some well-informed citizen to say, didn't they get all that money with that penny tax? What are they doing with that money? And how is that money being used to address some of these issues that we're, that we're facing right now in terms of facilities? And I, and I think you have to really think about that going forward. I'm going to slip over here. Can you guys hear me? Yeah.
What I don't want is to come away today with another set of something, oh, something that we've got to work on.
Right.
I, I don't mean, I don't mean to work, but I mean, we've got several. Currently several lists of good things that we've been working on. And I know everybody may not be in agreement that the mission critical is where we're going or what we're doing. I agree with Eric on that. And I guess for me, it would be nice if we could. Figure out whether it's the mission critical or whatever we want to call it, not a new name. And it can hold them or, um, into the plans that we already have.
Sure. I, I think that's a part of that alignment, but, but what I was getting ready to move us to in, in, in just the next few minutes. And I, and I sort of challenged you on this earlier, that a lot of the things up here probably will find or have been addressed in one of the documents. Whether it's Clemson study here, future, mission critical, you've addressed it, the two things, three things really. That, that are really, will, will, will require courage and leadership from this board are these two things. Extending the school year or day or time and seat time, the seat time piece. That, that's, those are the two things. And they're, they're interrelated. That if you walked away today and said, we're going to, we're going to commit. We want you, Dr. Postaway, to commit time and energy and resources to figuring out what this looks like as, as a staff. Given all of the things that we've talked about. Is, is, is this where you want to focus your time? To your point, because there's a lot of work already being done that they're going to continue to do anyway. That's great groundbreaking and new and, and directly, I think, addresses the, the data that Dr. Postaway. Uh, presented earlier. There's no way you're going to make it up if they don't put time on task.
And I know that's a limited conversation early on about the accelerated schools. There's the need possibly for principals to, um, request acceptance. To some of the things that the district, I mean, that the state typically would do. So, um.
Yeah, I think as a part of that, I just draw this, I drew another circle around something that I think Dr. Frazier mentioned. It goes back to the acceleration, uh, accelerations on schools. And that's, I'd be based on maybe the data that you're going to find out, where are the hardest hit schools? And how do we resource those schools effectively? And maybe how do we prioritize those schools in this strategy? That, that we undertake. I, I think that's the level of intentionality you may be confronted with if you go down this path. And I think based on our early discussion, this is the path that you want to be on. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know how to, uh, formalize at least the. The, um, guidance to the staff to, to push these things forward. And I certainly want to, um, give the board the opportunity to say, yeah, we think these three things. As a priority to look at, seat time. Um, maybe even extending the school year, what, what all that means. And Dr. Postaway, I think you, you and your team could put language to that. Um, and, and really help us from a technical standpoint, understand what all that means. But, um, all these other things. Absolutely, uh, sort of cascading, uh, into and out of this big work. But the kind of work and leadership that, that's calling on you for this moment really calls on you to really examine this kind of thing maybe. As we think about the next thirty-six, thirty-six month. And so I, I'm going to, uh, stop there and get your feedback on this, if this is the direction you as a board want to go.
So again, I think, uh, today was very helpful, uh, and meaningful as to, uh. Of the direction that we, uh, would like to move forward in. Uh, Mr. Goss, I, I actually, I think this is just one of probably several other workshops we need to. That needs to take place, uh, for us to continue to have this, this dialogue openly, uh, like this. So, uh, as one thing I would say is that, uh, and I'm, and I'm hoping that the board in itself is in agreement that we will have another workshop. Uh, sooner than later, uh, of, of this magnitude once again. And again, to really take what was shared today by every board member and then start really defining even more so. Allowing staff to say, okay, here, here are some areas that have been identified, a three takeaway, uh, on today. And how can we put what was discussed today into goals that we've already identified or some things that the board may have already, uh, discussed? Uh, and, and moving forward and how do we, how, how do we redefine that in, in this movement here moving forward? Then come back and talk about those same things, uh, again, moving forward. Uh, how, what's the next step beyond these measures? Because everyone today has given some great insights, uh, as to how they, they, they see where we are, how they're feeling. And, and what the next steps will be like, what, what, what are the whats, the whats, uh, uh, moving forward? And I think we have to compile that and in our next workshop then begin to, uh, take a deeper dive, uh, into the next, next workshop. If your schedule permits, and I'm not putting you clearly on the, on the spot right now. Uh, could be sometime next month. I, I think that the sooner the better. Uh, uh, you know, that we continue to have the dialogue and continue to expand upon this. And, you know, I'll allow the superintendent an opportunity to add on or take away from what I just said. A nod is even good because that's, that's even great. That means we continue moving forward. Uh, but let me say to you, uh, Mr. Goss, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, conducting today's workshop with us. Uh, we, we are, uh, I can say we are, uh, super excited about having dialogues of this magnitude and workshop. To be able to expand on, on, on our thoughts and trying to compile them together and moving forward. Because that's the best way we're going to be with work as a board, right? Is to be able to have these kinds of conversations, uh, talking about, uh, our viewpoints and where we see things are. Because we can better make decisions and be able to have a deeper dialogue, uh, when we're, with understanding each other's thoughts. And, uh, ideas as we continue to move forward, working in conjunction, uh, with the superintendent and, and the district as a whole. Uh, makes the work a little bit easier, uh, moving forward. So I, I'm great, grateful about this. Uh, Ms. Waters, you want to add anything?
No, um, I appreciate this session. I, um, echo, um, Reverend Max's sentiments that we, I think we should continue doing this. Um, I think this is really productive and I, I'm, I'm excited that so many board members, um, have had, uh, an opportunity to connect already. But even more excited that once we got in the room, it seems that we're all, um, you know, very passionate, very concerned about where we go from here and committed to doing the work. Um, so thank you so much for the opportunity and I look forward to more.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, um, say that, um, as a new board member and a former district employee. Coming on the board and being suspicious of. coming on the board and being suspicious of, uh, the coalition for kids piece that played a very pivotal role in getting some school board members elected, uh, made me very leery about accepting, um, some of the ideas. And I'd just like to say to my coalition folk, thank you for your win. But right now, I know that politics plays so much in school board, school board elections and the school, and the way schools operate. But I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work together as a group to do what's best for all kids. That's all I want to say. That's where I'm headed for the next two years with this group.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next, uh, twenty-two months is going to be very fruitful, uh, I know, as we begin to move forward. Uh, this will conclude our, uh, board workshop for today. Again, Mr. Ghosn, thank you so much for facilitating, facilitating this piece for us. And, uh, we look forward to the next session, uh, in conjunction with the schedule with the superintendent. We're going to take a five-minute recess and we will begin at, uh, our committee hall meeting at three oh six.